Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Wyoming City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel accessible from the city's website. If you would like to address City Council, please come up to the microphone to speak. The audio will not pick up if you do not speak into a microphone for those watching from YouTube. There are 13 items on the consent agenda. They are: the December 16, 2024 City Council Meeting Minutes; resolution authorizing the then and now certificate; a resolution requesting the Hamilton County Auditor to make advanced payment of taxes; resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Barrett Paving Materials Incorporated for the local street improvement program, Phase One Project; a resolution honoring the 2024 Citizens of the Year, which are the following people: Clarissa Benj, Joanne Edie, Chris Harmon, Kevin Helsler, Michael Hawke, Ella Hummel, Jeff McFarland, and Melissa Monick. Do I hear a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
I motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Okay, having been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Are there any questions or comments on the special reports? Okay, so hearing none, we will now hear a report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Our Christmas tree pickup has been extended to January 27th. So if you haven't got that tree out yet, get it out to the curb and we'll get it picked up. Just make sure there's no decorations, lights, or tinsel on it, and our public works crew will pick those up. Again, if we do get another snowstorm and that's the reason we extended it, it could get extended further, but let's hopefully we're done by the 27th. So no more big snowstorms. I know the kids won't be happy about that. The annual Citizens of the Year, as you just heard, ceremony will take place January 29th at 7:30 at the Pendry Center at the high school. If you've never been, I would really encourage you to come. It's an opportunity to really see some outstanding volunteers in the community. You get to hear a little bit about what each of them have done, and it's a pretty cool presentation. So again, that's at the Pendry Center at the high school on January 29th at 7:30 PM. The city's wellness fair was held this last Saturday at Civic Center. It was a big success. We had 30 vendors. They were sharing all kinds of health information and wellness information with the community. We do have some volunteer opportunities. We're accepting applications for vacancies on Promote Wyoming, the Rec Commission. You can find information on our website under the Volunteer tab to get more information. Tax forms, everybody loves this time of year, especially Jeremiah. It is the 2024 Wyoming tax forms are now posted on the city's website, and paper copies are available in the lobby during normal business hours. And the February City Council meeting is also on a Tuesday night because President's holiday is that week, so the next City Council meeting is Tuesday, February 18th at 7:00 PM. Go ahead.
Thank you. Are there any council committee reports not otherwise on the agenda? And are there any special committee reports not otherwise on the agenda? Okay, so then we've reached that point in our meeting where a citizen may express an opinion, make a statement, address a concern, or ask a question on any subject that is not otherwise on the agenda. Comments will be recorded into the minutes and passed along to be addressed by the appropriate staff or City Council Committee as needed. This portion of the meeting is not for City Council to provide responses to a citizen comment, but to hear what the citizen has to say. If you wish a response from the city to your concern or request for information, please leave your contact information with the clerk before you leave the meeting. And as a reminder, please state your name and address before making your comments to City Council. Is there anyone present that would like to bring an item not otherwise on the agenda before City Council? Okay, seeing none, we will go to the next business item. And that is the swearing-in of Carla Winburne as an EMS lieutenant.
I'd like to introduce Mayor and Council Carla Winburne to you. Emergency Services is something she's done all of her life. She started as a fire explorer when she was 16 years old. She got her paramedic in 1991. She started working for the city of Wyoming in 2002. And during that time, she's been known for her compassion, and she's always continued her education. She's earned, during her tenure, she's earned her RN in nursing and also her Masters of Science in Nursing. She's going to be a great lieutenant for us, and she's going to do a great job. And Carla, you brought some people with you as well, right?
I did. I brought my sister, my brother, my best friend, my nieces and nephews, my niece. I just love you guys. Thank you so much for being so supportive of my career and the things that I've done and the family things that I've missed out on all my life because of this. I just love you guys so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, Carla, I want you to sit over here so everyone can see you. All right, can you please raise your right hand and repeat after me? I, Carla Winburne solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution and obey the laws of the United States and the state of the, excuse me, and of the state of Ohio that I will in all respects observe the provisions of the Charter and ordinances of the city of Wyoming and the policies and procedures of the Wyoming Fire and EMS Department, and I will faithfully discharge my duties as lieutenant for the city of Wyoming. Congratulations.
You thought they were here to see you?
Yeah.
Thanks to you all for coming out tonight. All right, next on the agenda is a proclamation declaring Black History Month. Whereas the life and vitality of our nation is enriched and strengthened by the diversity of peoples and cultures that it encompasses. And whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Black Americans to our cultural, economic, spiritual, and political development. And whereas the 2025 national theme for the observance is African-Americans and Labor, with this theme focusing on the various and profound ways that work and working of all kinds, free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary, intersect with the collective experiences of African-Americans. And whereas the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas the city of Wyoming continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens are respected and recognized for their contributions. And whereas it is especially important that each new generation come to know their ancestral history and to learn of the contributions, accomplishments, and sacrifices of their forebears in order to create a better future for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Wyoming, Ohio, on behalf of all citizens and residents of the city, do proclaim the month of February in the year 2025 as Black History Month, given under my hand this 21st day of January in the year 2025. All right, so next up is presentation of the 2024 Green Business Awards, and I think I turn it over to Chris Pagan.
So council, mayor, madam clerk, my name is fellow citizens. My name is Chris Pagan, and I am a member of the Wyoming Environmental Services Commission. And we do many things in the community around the environment, but one thing that we do annually is grant an award for a local business or institution that promotes environmental values and environmental actions. And the way this will work is I'm going to describe the two award winners, and then the mayor is going to read a resolution and then provide a little sticker that these award winners can put on, show the pride.
recognizes the effect local businesses have on the environment, and it encourages and recognizes sustainable business practices through the Wyoming Green Business Award. And whereas, the ESC solicited and reviewed nominations from residents and local businesses and selected those making the greatest strides in conservation, sustainability, and reducing consumption, reusing its property, and recycling materials. And whereas, the ESC has selected the Presbyterian Church of Wyoming as a 2024 Wyoming Green Business Award winner. And whereas, the church created an earth-caring team as part of its mission and ministry. And whereas, the church incorporates environmental protection in sermons, Sunday School curriculum, and its library holdings. And whereas, the church implements sustainable building practices around the use of renewable energy, its HVAC systems, and lighting. And whereas, the church reduces harm from solid waste by experimenting with paperless surfaces, reducing and recycling its paper, reducing and recycling its aluminum, glass, and plastic by recycling all of its electronic waste, and by composting its food waste. And whereas, the church reduces pollution and promotes sustainability by maintaining a two-acre garden that produces 60 pounds of food per annum. Therefore, now let it be resolved that the City Council of the city of Wyoming, on behalf of the people of the city, wishes to congratulate the Presbyterian Church of Wyoming for its exemplary environmental efforts and for being selected for the 2024 Wyoming Green Business Award, passed unanimously this 21st day of January 2025. Congratulations. So even though we don't have a representative, let me go ahead and read the resolution honoring B L L C as a 2024 Wyoming Green Business Award winner. Whereas, the Wyoming Environmental Stewardship Commission, ESC, recognizes the effect local businesses have on the environment, and it encourages and recognizes sustainable business practices through the Wyoming Green Business Award. And whereas, the ESC solicited and reviewed nominations from residents and local businesses and selected those making the greatest strides in conservation, sustainability, and reducing consumption, reusing its property, and recycling materials. And whereas, the ESC has selected B L L C as a 2024 Wyoming Green Business Award winner. And whereas, B L L C was a 2023 Wyoming Business Award winner and has continued its environmental ethics in 2024 by implementing policies and practices around sustainability, pollution reduction, and waste elimination. And whereas, those practices include, but are not limited to, composting food materials and packaging, avoiding unnecessary cleaning chemicals, and promoting these practices to its customers to encourage wider pro-environmental values in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wyoming City Council, on behalf of its citizens, congratulates B L L C for its exemplary environmental efforts and for being awarded the 2024 Wyoming Green Business Award, passed unanimously this 21st day of January 2025. Okay. So we actually have to officially adopt these resolutions. So the resolution honoring the Presbyterian Church of Wyoming as a 2024 Wyoming Green Business Award winner. So do I hear a motion with respect?
I move to approve the resolutions.
Second. Is there any discussion? I just think, from my own point, it's just very impressive how you guys are really taking this as serious stewards of both our city and our world, and so we appreciate the example that you're giving others. Any other discussion? All right, having been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? The motion carries. So now I need a resolution honoring B L L C as a 2024 Wyoming Green Business Award winner. Do I hear a motion with respect to the resolution?
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? No? Okay, so having been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Next is a report with recommendation from the city manager to City Council for continuation of the DORA for an additional five years.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick report. The DORA was established back in, and just so everybody knows, DORA stands for the Designated Outdoor Refreshment Area. That was established back in January 27th of 2020. Hard to believe that five years has already gone by. It was expanded, actually, last year on March 18th, and has really been an overwhelming success. Checking with police, reports from the police department, we have had no police issues within the DORA. I know that was a concern once it was first established that that could be an issue, and we've had none. And many of the businesses have seen it as helpful to their business, helpful to draw people in, and the continued expansion of the Village Green and Performance Pavilion have also benefited from the DORA. So it's my recommendation that council approve for another five years the DORA, and that's what I put before council. I'll take any questions.
Any discussion?
I'll put forth a motion to extend the DORA for another five years.
Second. All right. All right, so having been moved and seconded to accept the report to continue the DORA for an additional five years, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed?
I don't oppose, but I probably should abstain as a person who benefits from the DORA.
Okay. All right.
I benefit from the DORA, too. Be more clear.
All right, those opposed? The motion carries. All right, so next up is our fourth quarter financial summary. I'll turn it over to the finance director.
Tonight I do have the 2024 financial summary. And the first few slides will highlight the general fund. So in 2024, the general fund revenue was just over 14 million. You can see the different categories of real estate taxes, income tax receipts, the local government fund, charges for services, the majority of which is our paramedic EMS billing, permits, the majority of the permits is building permits, core costs. The interest earnings allocated to the general fund is 380,000, and then there's a number of miscellaneous revenue. As you can see by the chart, the majority of the revenue that is received by the general fund is property and income tax. In terms of general fund expenditures, there were 12,358,000. About 50% of the expenditures are in the police department, other operating expenditures in our public works, facilities, departments. Again, just to show you a chart of the different expenditures. I'll go over some highlights here in a second. So the general fund highlights, first I highlight income tax receipts. Income tax receipts were up 9.6% compared to 2023. The 2023 income tax receipts were just under 7.4 million, and in 2024, the city received 8.1 million in income tax receipts. In terms of property tax receipts, just over 4.6 million, which is a 29% increase compared to 2023. In 2023, we received about 3.6 million, and the increase is due to, as we've discussed at prior meetings, the reevaluation that was completed at the end of last year. And in terms of expenses, we expended 94% of the budget. In terms of our operating budget in the general fund, we expended about 8.2 million in 2023, and it was about 8.211 in 2024. So our operating expenses were under budget. And really, the only difference is between the two years is our transfers, particularly for our capital improvement fund. So our transfers were higher in 2023 than they were in 24. We did some additional projects in 23. To move on, the next two slides will highlight the Recreation Fund. So Recreation Fund generated just over 1.4 million in revenue, and that is up 119,000 compared to 2023. In 2023, we received 1,329,000 in revenue. And really, the increase is across a number of categories. It wasn't just one revenue source that comprises of the increase. So it's across a number of the different programs and services that the Recreation Department provides. In terms of expenditures, 1,457,000. That compares to, just in 2023, the expenditures were just under 1.4 million. Some of that increase is due to personnel cost, some of that being part-time and the hourly rate that we have to pay to be competitive. Some of that also is the aquatic center and the contract to run the aquatic center and the pool. And the next slide is our capital improvement and waterworks fund. Just a couple of items that I'll highlight. The public safety, really, there's our public safety fence and facility improvements. So we're going to do some concrete work and some other exterior improvements along with the fence. And the other two really, I'll say, three major expenditure categories are Oliver Road, Vermont Reconstruction, and then design for Mount Pleasant and Rally Road. In terms of the Waterworks Capital Improvement Fund, there's some design work that was paid for on Oliver Road, the Hilltop Park Water Main project, Rally Road design, and then the debt service for the water fund.
In terms of the water revenue fund, which is probably the other major funds in the city, revenue was up 149,000 in 2024 compared to 2023. In terms of the budget, revenue was up 43,000 compared to the budgeted amount in 2024, just slightly up in 2024. And the expenditures were under the budgeted amount by about 125,000. Some of that was due to a decrease in our expenditures, our transfers out, but we didn't have to transfer as much money for capital projects in 2024 compared to what we had budgeted. And the last slide I have is the Street Construction and State Highway Fund. Of these two funds, the Street Construction Fund obviously are any expenditures related to the streets in the city that aren't Springfield Pike. The State Highway Fund is specific to Springfield Pike. And those expenses are spread across on both funds, gas, electric, and streetlights and traffic lights. So the State Highway Fund pays for just traffic lights all on Springfield Pike. All the other streetlights are paid out of the Street Construction Fund. There's some snow and ice expenses, salt expenditure paid from these two funds. There's also some other works, labor, so there's really work on the streets or Springfield Pike, and labor is allocated to these funds as well. So I had tonight, unless we had any questions?
Any questions?
Nice job, as always.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so it's recommended, if there's no questions, that the report be received. Do I hear a motion with respect to the report?
I move to receive the report.
Second. Any further discussion? Okay, having been moved and seconded to receive the report, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? The motion carries. So next up is, this is the first reading of an ordinance amending the personnel ordinance into clearing an emergency. It's recommended that the rules be suspended and the ordinance be considered for adoption tonight. Do I hear a motion to suspend the rules?
I move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Having been moved and seconded to suspend the rules, it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion carries. So you will now need a motion to adopt the ordinance tonight. Do I hear a motion with respect to the ordinance?
I move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Having been moved and seconded to adopt the ordinance, it takes an affirmative vote of five for passage. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion carries. Does anyone have any new business not otherwise on the agenda? Okay, then we're to the point of miscellaneous, and tonight I start with Cindy.
I feel like I have missed being in council meetings. It's just last year we did that. You knew that was coming, right? But that's all I want to say, I just missed you guys. Glad to be back together.
Yeah. Hey, April? Okay. Jody?
Something, you know, I always have something. First, I just want to say thank you to Jeremiah. Not only does it do a great job with our, just managing our overall finances as a city, but having just come out of a finance committee prior to city council, there are so many little rules and, I won't call them tricks, but things he has to remember to operate this way and that way, such that we miss this, hit this deadline and move these funds. And the institutional knowledge that you bring to our environment here is really huge, and you really can't measure that, but its impact is tremendous. So thank you for making such a well-oiled machine and having such confidence in our budget. Historic Snowfall and our Public Works did an incredible job, so thank you for that as well to Rob and his team. That was crazy, and we were by far, I think, in the best shape in the city. And so thank you to Rob's team for that. And the last thing I have, and this comes really from a place of caring and compassion, it is a changing political landscape. There you are, Rob, I didn't see you right there, thank you. It is a changing political landscape, and I would just like to encourage both as an individual and as a city council member, a degree of tolerance and caring and empathy among us as neighbors. Remember that we're neighbors first, that this place, there's no place for hate in our community, and that we need to really focus on being neighborly and loving one another, because we're all better together than separate individuals. So I think that will be an important thing, just to remember that we are all better together and we should love one another in the way that we would like to be loved.
Grant?
Good luck, Grant.
Yeah, thank you. I stand to benefit from being in Cindy's position where I wasn't here for at least one other meeting. So for those of you left from the fire department back in November, we had a carbon monoxide scare at the restaurant, and it's the first time I've ever called 911 in town. And they were there extremely quickly, faster than I anticipated. And before I could get the door open, they had the truck unloaded, they had everything going. And it was just really fantastic to feel like taken care of in a moment of some stress. And the restaurant wasn't going to be able to open if we couldn't figure this out. And so anyway, from a citizen perspective, thank you for all that you guys do. I was kind of hoping the rest of the group was going to be in here for that. Anyway, share my thanks to them. Thank you for everything, we appreciate it certainly. And the, nothing, it was no, it was a false alarm, so anyway.
Okay. I've got two things. One's a compliment, and the other one's more informative to share. First one, the snowstorm, boy, I mean, to say that we were on top of it, Rob is an understatement, I mean, it was incredible driving around and walking around different jurisdictions and then coming home. And it was, it was as if we lived somewhere else. So, and along those lines, so I know that our, the employees worked an enormous amount of hours in preparation during the storm, then throughout the storm and after the storm to clean the streets and make sure everybody was safe. And with that in mind, I had called Rusty about a subject. I, our office is down in the city of Cincinnati, and it was a little different down there. So, so we had a few friendly discussions inside the city of Cincinnati about the subject. So I called Rusty just to see, historically, do we ever get called on to help other jurisdictions or contracted to help other jurisdictions? And, you know, the fact of the matter was, we had spent, staff had spent so many hours working on this, it wasn't relevant to that. But as I was talking to Rusty, he was huffing and puffing a little bit, and I was just pulling up to my house. And across the street at Gilligan's, Rusty was shoveling the snow on the sidewalk. It was almost 6 o'clock at night. I'm like, what the heck are you? So he said, well, it's just a logical thing that happened. The CIC owns the building. And there was some uncertainty about who's responsible, right, for clearing the walkway. So instead of asking the employees to go clear the walkways, Rusty got a shovel and, and salt. And I just want to compliment Rusty for going the extra mile and being conscientious about the employees that do all that work. And Jeremiah came over, and he was also shoveling. So I just thought that was well above and beyond the call of duty. So compliments all around. Now, the other thing is very different. I'm fortunate to be involved with Sorda Metro, and this is as much for us as anything else, but I chaired the Ops Committee. And this morning, we changed some things, criterion on the MTIF funding. And the MTIF, I looked it up to see what the acronym, I knew it would come up. What, what is the acronym? Acronym MTIF, it's Metro Transit Infrastructure Fund. So in 2020, the county, we as a county, voted on issue seven. And 75% of all those funds, it's a .8 cent sales tax, and 75% goes to fund our bus systems and et cetera. The other 25% goes to fund infrastructure projects that have been underfunded for a couple decades, right? And there's a lot of catch-up going on. Well, again, a compliment to Wyoming, we were out there seeking those funds early before I had ever heard of MTIF, and learned a lot. So, and like today, they gave a readout of all the different jurisdictions that have applied, what projects they applied for, et cetera. And there was one that had only applied once and they didn't receive, they're 0 for 1. We're 2 for 4, which is a good average right now. So, and Rust, our group continues to apply for these funds. And today, one of the changes that was made, the city of Cincinnati gets a lot of the funding. So, because they have a lot of need. And one of the changes was that there's a new categorization of projects below a million and above a million. And they read off the data and why to do this. And the example was this last go-round, only nine projects were awarded to seven jurisdictions. And with the new categorization, it'd be 17 projects in 14 jurisdictions. So I'm going to email out to everybody what that looks like on the chart and how they do the rating and the rankings. And the rankings, so part of it was the size. The other part was the wording change from economic impact to community resource impact, which is really important for somebody like us, right? Because we might, it might be harder for us to make a case of economic impact than downtown Cincinnati or some viaduct, for example, right? So that was a pretty significant change. There was an example that they used about safety and pedestrian safety. And recently, Victory Parkway had a number of pedestrian incidences that were dramatic. And then Col Rain applied, but didn't get the funding. And they, they had had some pedestrian needs. But the data, the police data, supported that where there were more incidences on Victory Parkway than Col Rain. But the safety criterion factor was the same, because they thought that there was a real need in Col Rain as well as Victory Parkway. So I just think that's important for us to know and as we share the criteria and how we apply for those things. And those changes that they're going to help jurisdictions like ours. So I didn't know when to bring it up, so I decided to bring it up in these comments.
This is great, no.
We'll talk about it in the committee hall too. It's really as much for us to talk about. So thanks for all the work you do.
All right, and I guess so, last I would say, Public Works is going to be the star of this month. And I think you also had, what, four Water Main breaks in the middle of all that? And I mean, the fact that you guys are out in that weather, getting stuff fixed so that we're not inconvenienced, we're very appreciative. And I also, the other thing is just, as the first meeting of the new year, just want to wish everybody a happy new year, and hopefully you and your families are healthy and have a prosperous year. So with that, thank you. We need to excuse Chris Woodside. So do I hear a motion to excuse him?
I move to excuse Councilman Woodside.
Thank you. Thank you. Having received a motion and a second to excuse Mr. Woodside, would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion carries. And there is no executive session tonight, so do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Having been moved and seconded to adjourn for the night, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed? The motion carries, we stand adjourned. Thank you.